We are broadcasting and we will look for our audience to find. Uh, this is the planning board meeting of February 2025 and we'll start with a roll call of members. Ryan Bell.
Here.
Then Lucy in his house. Alden Clark.
Here.
I was.
Here.
David Senni.
Here.
David.
Here.
I am yours.
He is, he is. Probably Japan unless I can also, I uh, I need you um. He's moving over to Vegas. Jack, are you with us? Jack, we can't hear you uh. You.
Okay, can you hear me now? Hello?
Yep, we can hear you, Jack.
Okay.
Okay, we have, we have six members present plus Jack. Um, so we, we have sufficient numbers to address this. Uh, our agenda is the two public hearings. One for thirty eight Forrester Street, which is a continuation from last meeting. Uh, and then thirty three Merrill Street, both are six C special permit applications that lead to adding an additional residential building on an individual site. Uh, following that, we will close the public hearings, we will have general business. A little minutes, government have open items. The general public doesn't necessarily have to change for that. Change for that, that's just pretty boring, so. We can get going with the two public hearings now. Uh, I think, uh, Mr. Neve, uh, thirty eight Forrester Street is first. Again, this is a continuation from uh meeting, uh, and just for the general public, uh, we will have presentation of additional information. It's requested by the board meeting. Uh, that will be followed by initial questions from the board, and I will reopen more public discussion. There is any as a follow up. Uh, we're going to close public comment, the additional deliberation. Some sort of decision. So, Mr. Neve, the board.
We should uh. So, uh, as part of the continuing, this was a sixty special permit and we had certain coverage, uh, planned, so. Uh, we had engineers come out, uh, we did a photography on it, you can zoom in any. And we had, uh, proposed grades put on, so, and one of the questions we had was the retaining wall to the left, and we gave a height to the top of the retaining wall, which is sixty two, bottom wall fifty eight. This will be made out of landscape block, so it's about a four foot wall. And then to the rear of the property, um, you can see where it pitches down, we did a three to one pitch, so for every three feet it drops about a foot, kind of grays down to, to the right. And on the front of the property, um, it does get steeper there, so we went to a six to one pitch for every foot, or six feet it drops a foot. And we kind of kept the grading, uh, in that right hand corner on the bottom, um. Consistent with what grades there, so that's kind of where the, where the water wants to flow now, so, and then as part of it, uh, you know, we can add gutters and, um, some stuff to a whole, hopefully, for something. Um, but, uh, as far as bringing in lots of fill over, we're trying to keep it consistent with what's there now, so the natural way has been, uh, work with the drainage that's there. Questions?
Yeah, question, so just, just so I make sure I'm reading right, so the, the items, the, uh, grade marked in green are the new proposed, proposed finals. And so, just, just to, let's see, with the retaining wall there and the proposed garage, uh, the base of the garage is at fifty six point four?
Fifty six point four, yeah.
And so, and so you're so you're actually cutting into the, into the, into the grade, the natural current grade there? And, and filling in some of it because it is, because it is grading up to find?
Yeah, the, so the bottom of the wall, we fifty eight, it's about a foot and a half difference from the bottom of the walls of the garage, so the garage will come up, so what will happen is it will fish slightly towards the wall, and we'll have some sort, we'll have some sort of stone there to help accept the water, because we want to pitch away from the garage, I assume, pitch it in. Pitch it in.
And then as it, and the, the retaining wall is, is coming lower as it goes to the, as it gets closer to thirty three?
It will get lower. Much we cut, obviously, we're going to try to be the natural way to land there as much as possible, so that we can use the drainage, that's all we need. So, and we got the pitches really, freedom on the back, six on the front, plus trans. So, which is a foot long. The water just falls, the water slowly.
And so you are taking away some of the current soil on things from the, the proposed new building side of the retaining wall?
Yeah, yes, we will, we will, we will cut it, so. Some of it will be removed, some of it will be lost.
Thank you.
Hey, I'll, uh, I'll open the floor to, uh, public comment. Is any, just, just a note that comments need to be limited to a box of two minutes. So if anyone has any follow up comments, be feel free. Okay, I think we can close the public comment. Any? Any other discussion on?
Just following up on the whole this question, um, so the proposed grade is sixty one at the back of the garage, and sixty two at the back of the garage. So that's almost sixty, finish four, so you go over again what's going to happen there? Or is it going to really be embedded six feet into the hillside?
So, sixty two at the back of the garage, it'll be, it'll come up toward the wall, and then where it gets to the back, it'll come, it'll start fishing down. So there will be some sort of retainable, so the back of the garage will have a higher, you know, there will be more concrete staying. So, but not as, you know, compared to the dirt, but if, if we cut too much there, what's going to happen is the water's going to rush down, so we're trying to use the grade, kind of moves around the garage, and it slowly dissipates on the three to one pitch that you're going toward.
I think you're, you're limited by your.
Yeah.
You've got a tight corner there, and you've got visiting grades of and sixty one, sixty two, and there's not much you can do with that.
No, but we can keep it like three one, as it dissipates. Yeah. People are slow. Pursuing drainage problems in the future.
What's, what's not apparent in your plan, and, and you can see if you drive past the property, is as, as you move to, to the right. It rises up again.
Right where, where the, where the tree was.
Already on the property.
Yeah, almost there was a big tree there at one point, so, yeah, oh, are you saying far, where it races up there? Yeah, it almost, it's almost a natural swill there, because the water kind of dissipates that way, and then as it comes back up to the property to the right of seven Stanley, yeah, it does come up there, but it creates kind of path for water to channel down toward the iron pot. But again, as long as, as long as it's not too steep, and we're not just trying to push all the water, it wants to dissipate slowly. See any problems? And we can always, I mean, if there's a problem, we can hack others, help dissipate some of the water, but. I'll just say, I was one of, I think, one of the few people who were pushing to have this plan, and appreciate you for hearing it, it's always required, but it definitely helps clarify and does believe things in chance, so appreciate you doing it, it was good. Thank you.
Any questions or comments in the board? I, I think we can begin to discuss a motion that I'll need a little help with giving our conversations over the last couple of meetings, and then discussing specifically the findings combined in, in the step forward, as well as the specific decision.
Yeah, I think, Alden, I think, uh, it's been a nice opportunity for, if it's okay, uh, brief mention of just some of the, the uh, uh, findings that the board is making, uh, it's not necessary to reverbate them, uh, but really just to know that the board is making findings, this is what it is. Issues to permit, so, I'm about to refer you on motions and so forth, but brief mention for, uh, the subject of that, my name will be on record.
So, yeah, so for the record, we do want to include the findings according to the step.
Pretty much, so can I ask for a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to.
Oh, sorry.
Uh, I think we can do this, um.
This approving with Secretary.
Yeah.
Um, everybody present here can vote, so.
Jack.
Jack, Jack won't be able to vote, Jack would have done this because he wasn't officially in place of practice. Though all those in favor?
Right.
Opposed?
Thank you very much. Thank you. Good night.
Okay, moving on to, uh, thirty three Merrill. Again, same, same structure that I mentioned, we will have a presentation that will be followed by additional comments for the board, I will open up the board. Comment. Close public comment, for the deliberations, and then move to some sort of decision proceeding.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board, for the record. This right now, thirteen Egard Street in Ainsbury. And I'm a member of the design team for this project, we've been working on it for about eight months. Uh, so I'm going to present an overview of our special permit application, this is the beginning or the end of a three step process that we started last August, formally with the zoning board of appeals. So we'll go to the next slide, thank you, Eddie. Um, so the applicant for the project is Stephen Lewis from Newbury Port Properties, who lives in the west end of Newbury Port. In terms of the design team, Scott Brown from Scott Brown Architects, and Matt Landis, who is here from Scott's office, he worked on the design for the project in terms of the building design. John Hargraves did the civil work, I've done sort of the land use consulting permitting aspect, and Lisa Meehan has prepared the draft reservation restriction, which was presented to the historic commission in December, and she is working on the exclusive use easement with the abutters that is included in the application and part of a byproduct of the zoning board, uh, variance application from August, next slide please. So as I say, uh, for us in this particular project on Merrill Street, it was a three step approval process, we needed a dimensional variance, the lot was undersized. Uh, we applied for that in July at a meeting, a sole meeting on the twenty seventh of August, uh, where we presented the application, received, believing in the amnesty, the zoning board appeals. Uh, we then proceeded to prepare the draft preservation restriction, we, uh, retain the surfaces of an architectural historian to update the historic survey of the property, it's already listed as a contributing structure from the nineteen eighty four survey, but we had it updated, uh, and presented to the historic commission as part of a two part meeting in December, so we did part eight, which was the historical significance of what I now know is the hall house, the eighteen sixty thirty three Merrill Street House, uh, was deemed historically significant by the commission, so they entered into the second part of the meeting, which is, uh, under the DCOD, as I understand it, the review of not just the preservation restrictions for this particular special permit, but the roof line change that we were proposing, the alterations to the structure triggered the DCOD, so we did that in December, and obviously that, that brings us to, to tonight, uh, presenting the six C application to sort of consummate, hopefully close out uh, what, what's been a really positive process with at least, uh, the neighbors and the, the staff, and the, the board members to date, so next slide please. So why didn't we end up on a six C design, we certainly looked at other alternatives, but it was pretty clear to us, uh, in looking at six C and what, what its potential opportunities were, dealing with the challenges of this site, that it generated a lot of benefits, uh, it, it, it reduces the nonconformities that this property currently has, uh, in respect to the existing land use, the density and the dimensional controls in the R two district, uh, we are proposing a two family use, it's currently a three family, uh, the curb cuts are nonconforming on the lot, there's a lot of third wide, there are six off street parking spaces, two curb cuts, one, one rather large, three cars can get off the street on one, on Russia Street. There are some structural encroachments that don't directly relate to the zoning, and they've been there for a certain period of time, but there's fences that cross the line, uh, there are carports on the abutting property that, that approach this property, uh, all of which we worked to resolve with the voters. Um, and importantly, when you look at the historic aspects of thirty three Merrill and the hall house, there are many noncontributing elements that, that like many houses, over the twentieth century, uh, have not benefited the architectural character of the structure, there's aluminum siding, bi windows, don't be the traditional window pattern, brick steps and iron rings that twentieth century, uh, concrete retaining wall at the front of the site, so there are a lot of, a lot of ways to, to give this building the respect that it deserves to bring it back to as close as we can utilizing that structure to, to its original character. The, the turn, turns the better this kind of comes, the volumes that we look at between what we call, and I'll present a couple of slides, but as in bright options, something that doesn't require a special permit or a variance, using the nine V three, the alterations to a preexisting two family structure, they don't result in something that looks like anything in the neighborhood. You'll see that, so, we'll go on, you look at the image, but we tried to come up with a design under six C that had similar building volumes as to what you could do with an as of right scenario, but come up with footprints, massing, scale, character, overall design that was more commensurate with the surrounding neighborhood. So that, that's included in this presentation. There's also some large trees, unique factors here, there's two large trees that really straddled the lot on both sides of the property. So they're challenging to preserve if you're adding buildings or adding impervious surface for parking. Uh, this is a three family, but it hasn't really utilized a couple of the parking spaces on Merrill Street, they're, they're kind of grassy and don't get a lot of use. So everybody today, at least in the recent past, is largely parked on Russia Street, so the curb cut exists on Merrill's. Certainly, if more people were to have cars that live in that three family, there's opportunities to expand the parking, which would impact those mature trees, that the neighbors, at least at the time on both sides, felt were important to their quality of life retaining those trees, so we, we think the six C does that, we know it does, based on the current design that's amended. Um, and then, you know, there's some parking, I talked about the carport, and the vents on twenty nine Merrill, that's just off to the left of that image of thirty three Merrill, there's also very tight parking for the house next door that has sort of led over the line into thirty three, uh, barrel that we're also trying to resolve with the exclusive use easement to be what. Okay, next slide, please. So our design approach, like, pretty much all the projects that I've worked on, it's really important we start with a, with a good understanding of these existing conditions, you know, it sounds routine, but it's important for us to look at what is on that property from a land use standpoint, how do the, how do the structures and the lot, the zoning ordinance, and then that leads us into an evaluation of what design options, you know, obviously, you've got the market support, uh, renovation or redevelopment of this property, Newbury Port is a strong real estate market, so that was easy. So it's about looking at that ten thousand square foot lot, three family use, and the characteristics of the parking on that lot, and determining, you know, what can somebody do with that property, it was purchased by Steve uh, last year, and he assembled the design team, so we went through that second step, looking at the zoning code, and said, this is, these are your options, we really came up with at least two outcomes that seem feasible, the six E being the second and the preferred, and the one we're hearing from tonight. So we looked at the neighborhood context, which was really important to put in there, which, which of the two options made the most sense. Uh, clearly, an as of right option is an easier process to get a building permit than going through for dimensional variances than the, the DCOD, we still would have needed that with the door, you know, with extension, the roof line change, but we wouldn't have needed the variance for the six C if that was a bit better design outcome, which I think you'll see wasn't, you can see it on that number two slide at the bottom. Uh, so we, we moved quickly off the as of right, so called as of right, I mean three approach, and developed a six C design. I spent a bit of time talking to a majority of the neighbors that live in those homes, I think there's twenty eight or twenty nine abutters that I looked at within two to three hundred being of subject property. I got to know a lot of them that were near the structure over a three month period last year, preparing for the variance, and making a lot of changes, which I'll briefly scratch up here in terms of not just marketing this project and its benefits, but listening to people and making adjustments, because obviously, we don't know everything not living in that neighborhood, so we made six, seven, eight changes as a result of the dialogue, collaboration with the voters. Um, and then lastly revise the building and site plan if they come into the zoning board. And then make adjustments at the historic commission, and then here to the next slide. So, real quick, almost ten thousand square foot lot, we're in the, the R two, which is a ten thousand square foot, a single family, it's a three family use here, corner lot. It's got about eighty three feet of frontage on Merrill, a hundred and sixteen on Russia, so relatively square, you can see in the image. Um, it has the historically significant structure and those unique features, I, I just went over a couple of slides, you know, the large curb cuts, shade trees, the encroachments, uh, and, you know, what's great about these neighborhoods, as you all know, these traditional neighborhoods, is that the street build two line that often conflicts with the zoning. But there are provisions to build up to it with empty space, that's what we're proposing to do with what I told of Russian Street, the single family house that doesn't exist in this lot, is build up to that build two line and that street wall to be commensurate with the character of that neighborhood. Um, we've got one or two six bases, next slide please. So, real quick, looking at the ninety three of the so-called as of right design. We looked at that structure and I'm sure you guys are familiar with it, the nine V three essentially allows a single or two family on a nonconforming lot to expand by five hundred square feet of living area on each of the units, so a thousand square foot expansion, plus, uh, you know, any nonliving space that does not create a new nonconformity. So we looked at the lot covers, the open space, all the dimensional controls, and essentially, you could add those, you could add a two car garage with a room above it, uh, so a two story addition in two places for each unit, and you could still add a single car garage or shed back there and expand those parking areas, and that, that plan does not create any new nonconformities or intensify any existing nonconformities on the lot, which is only the, the, the lot area. So, clearly, if you look at it, we did, and, and I didn't find any of the neighbors in my canvassing that thought this was a more appropriate or better fit for how that property might be redeveloped by Steve or someone else, so we quickly moved off of this uh, design approach and looked at the six C option, next slide please. So, these are some of the disadvantages, if they aren't obvious in the last slide, that, you know, the, the sprawling footprint and the massing of this sort of complex of buildings, these do exist in Newbury Port. I think they're not, they're not the most favored way of doing expansions, uh, I think a lot of us, including me, have spent a lot of time, a long time ago, trying to figure out minimize these kinds of factors. Uh, and I think the six C is a great way to, to not have this being preferred design approach of somebody in, in our position. So, it's, it's got a very large footprint compared to the surrounding context, which I haven't gotten into yet, you know, you're probably familiar with the north end, this is a large sprawling footprint with weird massing that doesn't, doesn't fit the, the character of the surrounding neighborhood, the side yard, that there's no usable open space, as you can see on that plan, it's very fragmented by buildings, uh, a lot of impervious surface, there's a lot not to like, at least in our minds, even though that, that meets the code. So, uh, I think the next slide moves into the, the neighborhood context, so we step back, we looked at these twenty eight, twenty nine properties that surrounded the, the thirty three Merrill Street, looked at the land use pattern, most seventy five percent are single families, most of the rest are twos, the only three family is thirty three Merrill, so ninety six percent of the properties, all the other ones in this particular study are, are single or two families. And if you look at the average lot size, the singles are about four thousand square feet, even though the zoning's ten, we were used to that, right? The zoning, uh, is usually much creates a lot of nonconformities for all a host of reasons, but the average single family lot in that context that you see on the screen is four thousand square feet, and it's ten for a two family, so this lot is really well suited in terms of its surrounding land use pattern for a two family use and not a three. Uh, um, strong built in lines, again, that street wall, Russia Street, Merrill, all of them, they've all happened, and, you know, even the newer structures, and there were at least what I found really interesting, looking at the analysis of the surrounding context, is there's at least six or seven buildings built in the last thirty years in those twenty nine, uh, properties that were built largely fit into that context and adhered to traditional architectural principles. So even the new structures may explicit intent to fit in with the architectural character of that thing. I don't know that I've seen that many new structures in that small an area where you can't quickly tell what, where the new structures are, till you look down at the foundation and see it poured. They're telltale, you can drive by, not necessarily. So that, that was unique, which, which again led to the obvious preference for us to fit in, that's really what this project is all about, how do we make this, how do we bring this hall house back? How do we have our new addition fit into the character and the quality of that surrounding context? Next slide. So, the six C, as what you know, is, uh, is really about two detached structures on one lot, so we had an opportunity here because of the shape of the lot, because of the location of the hall house, to really do the ideal six C in my mind, which is to create two houses, houses that look like they're on separate lots. So if you drive by, they don't share anything, they share that fence that goes down the middle of the lot, that's about utilities, driveways, parking, street address, uh, they're going to look like it's two lots, but they're not two lots, I think that's for me, that's a big success, and one of the reasons I've worked on this project. The curb cuts exist where that house is on Russia Street, which is the one to the right, that doesn't exist, that's all, the front half of that is old pavement today, where you can park three cars off the street. So there's tandem parking for that, they're both single families, so the three would become a single, which is what it probably was originally in eighteen sixty. Uh, the other units is then the new house on the right, which will have a Russian Street address, if we move forward with it. That's a single car garage, you can park two cars in front of that garage, but it's really comfortable for two, it'd be nice if there's only two, that way the car is back behind the front building wall, the front side of the house of Russia Street, and then we have the two existing spaces that are on Merrill Street uh, that we can show where it's located there. So we think this is clearly based on our analysis of the surrounding context, those twenty nine properties, consistent density, lot area, front end, back parking, all those dimensional controls, it, it's got no new nonconformities either. Other than the need for the two structures on one. Next slide. So, as I said earlier, we, uh, we asked Scott, his team, Scott Brown Architects, to employ traditional architectural principles, again, have this building, this new building fit in, it's a colonial revital structure, we did one of these years ago on Warren Street, uh, from what used to be moral paint, I don't think it's there anymore, but twenty three Warren is essentially the same house. It's included in the image of, in the application. The historic preservation aspects of restoration of the hall house are a really important part, not only in the six C, but also the project. I'll go through that in a second. Significant alterations and repairs to the restoration of the hall house itself. The support of the affordable housing is the requirement of the twenty dollars per square feet, which is almost a, in this case, with twenty four hundred square foot new house, it, it's almost a fifty thousand dollar payment to the newly born housing trusted. Uh, but that's clearly an asset to Newbury Port to do that. Be there, we're adhering to the built in lines. We're adhering to the built-in lines and again, really making an effort to make this look like two lots. Nobody's going to know it's even a six E. If you don't live there. Next slide. There's the Warren Street house, so the garage will be at the other side, but it's essentially very similar to that same building footprint. Garage setback further on the Russian street than that one is on, on Warren. All those elevations were presented. Matt's here if you have any questions, what I've done to discuss any of the alterations, but we have elevations that were. Developed all four sides of both buildings, as well as the other buildings that were presented in December to the historic commission, approved as part of their. D C O D approval, next slide. So again, we've, we've got aluminum siding on this building, vinyl windows, one over ones, then two over twos, uh, most likely in the original building in eighteen sixty, that's what we're putting back. The stairs are not, not, it's the ramp, the concrete block wall, that's all being replaced. Some of those ideas came out of neighborhood input in terms of the wall, the stairs and railing. So it was a very productive process, especially the folks that are nearby on Merrill Street that are looking at this house, the, the front elevation. Next slide please. So again, it, it's already listed on the nineteen eighty-four inventory. We did a new form B, as I said. And it was deemed historically significant in the first part of being in December, next slide please. We presented a piece of repickering using that, or B surveying the preservation restriction. Uh, which did need one amendment as a condition of the approval for the support nation clause, uh, that leases put in the preservation restriction. So we, we, they've essentially, the historic commission approved it with the condition, a couple of those finer things be added, which leases where it will be respected. Right. That's a condition of approval, hopefully. Um, so again, window siding step. There's a lot of stuff stuck on the side of this building. But in this particular slideshow board, if not contributing elements, the balconies and stairs on the back, all Russian treated lumber. Uh, the alteration, so the roof, oh, the roof line change, we've added a shed dormer. We recessed it substantially from the ends, the gable ends of the building to hide it as best we could, but it's the only way we could get a golden flag stairway to get. And then dormer is being proposed and was approved by the historic commission to be on, on Russia Street side. Uh, that, that, speak to that if you have any questions. If we do have a bay window, we're ending. Balconies and stairbells, we have some door handies on the back. Solar array is already, it's already been removed and I think it was, it was shot home by the owner. Clear, we're proposing to put another one on there. But we'll need to prepare for it if somebody wants it. Sorry, if you look at the elevations, you can see it, they're dotted in there. Uh, next slide. Okay, there's the dormer. So that dormer is being added. That's what the historic mission was focused on. That's upon the Merrill Street side, not Russian. Roof canopy below and the bay window to the left. Again, that's the existing building, those are the alterations, those are the two over two windows, uh, you see the front side with all the notes and. Part of the store, which is review and approval in summer. Next slide please. That's the hall house. The Russia Street house, uh, again is basically the Warren Street house. Uh, all those details, colonial recovery, next slide. Covered that, I think, forty-eight thousand odd, uh, dollars that we will be paying if this project's approved prior to. If you want some building permit, I'm not sure when that condition applies. Uh, next slide please. So back to the sort of neighborhood input while I was on canvassing. We were originally going to take that tree down at the top there. It's Norway maple, so it's invasive species, it's on the line, but it does provide the neighbors a lot of shade. So we are simply going to trim some of the understory on our side, it's a very large tree, but it's going to stay. Uh, they would like to keep it. So it's not in the way, but we just trimmed the understory underneath where that car is sitting. Um, there was a desire to have concrete papers instead of pavement, uh, on Merrill Street, so we agreed to that. Uh, we've agreed to replace once a very high privacy fence, uh, it's the third arrow down on the left of Merrill Street with a four-foot decorative. Low fence, uh, along the street line. It's the stairs and railing, which we, we did early in the design, wall replacement again. Replace the fence along the Russian street property line, uh, with a wood privacy fence. Then provide that exclusive use easement for, for the land, trying to grow it to two hundred and sixty-nine square feet. It's, it's not a particularly large area behind that fence, but, um, the fence is, is in board of this property about two hundred and sixty-nine square feet. We've, we've offered the neighbors to the north, twenty-nine Merrill, an exclusive use easement. For the land behind that fence as well as the carport encroachment and a little bit of the parking up next to the house on Merrill Street. Next slide please. I'm almost done. So these were suggested stipulations that I think we presented back in August when we went to the ZOML deals. The last one I tapped in because of, uh, the D V S department, uh, and their comment about. Any, any alterations to the driveway curb cuts that. Maybe a tip-down or the panel on the left or the right, wherever we're making alterations that we actually, we will be putting the sidewalk. So yeah, we're in agreement to make the alterations needed for D V S to expand sidewalks because our curb cut's going from three cars to one. And if we have to repair the sidewalk, it is, so we're going to do that, that, that was the nature of the comment as I read it from. Individual D V S. All the rest of that was presented back in August. Still all into those stipulations from again, given the neighbors assurance, we're going to deliver on our agreements. Uh, next slide please. So we revised the plan to reflect those changes. Again, we did this after the August meeting. Probably presented it in August, uh, and submitted it after, but we have submitted it, a stamp survey plan with the. With the site line showing that I think the two hundred and sixty-nine square feet, which is the exclusive use area jump. Next slide please. Oh, five, two slides. So I went through the findings. Although I need to read those, you have a chance to look at them, but it seemed to us like the project was a good candidate. For a six E special purpose. I'll go to the next slide, which is really our view of public benefits in this project. Uh, we feel like it's very consistent with what I've already stated here, the bowling hill during the surrounding properties. Certainly in contrast to what one could do if one didn't ask for this permit. Uh, and it will have that preservation restriction, but that's deeded to the city. The city's the easement holder of the P R. The insignificant benefit, any future alterations requires the trip to the historic commission to make subsequent alterations to the structure. I think it's a high-quality building and site design, certainly higher quality than what you get with the so-called S prime ninety-three approach. Or even what's there today, there's clearly a, a significant payment to the housing trust for, for one house being added. We're actually reducing a unit, so we're going from three to two and we're, we're still providing as required repayment to the house and trust. Uh, and the volume is similar to what you get in the ninety-three with a very dramatic, different outcome from a design standpoint. And lastly, uh, you know, we're doing on and off site improvements, which again, wouldn't be part of the equation so much in ninety-three or an as a bright scenario. This has been a collaborative effort with staff, with board members, with the neighbors and Steve himself, who's making these improvements, not the writing them. I think it's a really positive example, but we can all do together to observe trees and make this, you know, make this neighborhood. Is today. So I think that was the last slide. If you have any questions for Matt, he's here as well.
But. Actually, three questions. First, you mentioned trees.
Yeah.
And there's a tree on the property, it's Russia.
Yeah.
The branches right now go more than halfway across the lot to the office. Just wondering if you can be limbing two large branches here. The branches, even if you limb those over to the branches, seen it, it looked like those still extend over the roof of the new house. You went to that or?
We have, we, we are going to have to remove, there's a big lead coming up over the property. We, we've looked at it and it doesn't look like there's going to be a conflict. We're going to have to limb up underneath, over where the house could sit. Which, which should not damage the tree irreparably, because it, you know, it's not simple. But our intention is to, to have that tree stay there. You know, the one that's most concerning to the neighbors is the one, the Norway maple. But we're going to do everything we can within reason to limb that tree on Russia Street. So you can see it there in that image. It's probably, it's understated, but that's kind of the canopy we're going to be looking for on our side. Uh, when that is trimmed, but there's a very large branch, as Rick said, that's leaning out on the parking area that's going to have to be removed. So yeah, thank you for pointing that. I'm not standing here to say we're not going to be making significant trimming of the underside we have.
But you understand, you, 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 you're confident that you'll be able to save that tree as part of this?
We're confident we can do that. I don't know that we can guarantee that, but that's clearly the goal.
Or to expand on that, I'm looking at it. So is that currently, sorry. Uh, is that currently pavement on the driveways, that's just hard. Um, Russia Street side.
David.
It's David, so you have to excavate that.
Yeah.
Get pretty close to those roots.
Yeah, that's probably only two inches thick, you know, so we're getting rid of that, but the foundation, yeah, it's going to be in the drip. Uh, you know, we, we believe we're less than a third of the drip line, which is kind of the rule of thumb of what you can normally alter. You know, no one can, no one can, uh, my understanding. Till you excavate, you don't exactly know which direction things are going, from the top side. But you can usually remove in a, in a significant manner, both the canopy and all without the tree done. But there's no guarantees.
Should probably.
Yeah.
You're connecting utilities that water sewer, sewer as well on the right.
I believe so. We're going to connect them wherever they need to be connected. I, I. Yeah, we typically let D V S make that determination, wouldn't recommend, uh, moralizing that again from the property area. Yeah. If, unless there's a specific reason for questioning, we, we would not, we'd be recommending that for D V S.
I was just wondering with that, how soon it would be coming along?
Yeah, that's what I think, D V S, has anybody, have you spoken to them? No, but I, I, I would make a commitment that because of the commitment we've already made, or decided to try. Do our best to save that tree, right, that if there's, if there's an added cost of moving into the other side, that, which is the only reason I, well, I don't know. If, if there's a way, if there's an added cost of going to the left further from the tree, we'll accept that as a condition of approval. Uh, is, you know, everything's pending D V S approving it.
That's ours.
Yes, that's a good suggestion. Like, a lot of stuff could go over there.
Another question I got, when you were showing your alternative. As a point of interest.
Yeah.
Um, one of the things you showed was single family garage, uh, coming off of Merrill Street. It seems to me with this site plan, you can still do that. No, when this, approving the six E isn't going to exclude future owner from doing it.
Much, excellent question. I was going to say what I heard at the Z V A, which is, looks like you guys are just jamming more stuff on the property to show that, you know, the six, the eleven, the ninety-three is a bad. Uh, so whether that's a garage, and I'm going to answer your question, whether that's a garage or a shed. You know, if anyone has a garage like mine, I'd be using it as a garage shed, got a two-car garage you can't park it. But, um, to answer Rick's question, we're at the maximum building coverage with both schemes. So we cannot add any more, maybe you could do an eighty square foot shed, so be wrong, but yeah, I don't think, think you can do it. We have the numbers here. On the ceiling, uh, of what we can put on our footprint on this site without coming back for the Z V A. So I think you're good.
Thank, thank you.
Yeah.
So the third one, which actually my, my most concerning. So right now, the, the character of the neighborhood streets is that there are continuous concrete sidewalks all the way down Russia Street. Crossing the driveways, also all the way down Merrill Street. The site plan, it looks like you're replacing that with something else, the way the site plan is drawn. In other words, if you look at the.
You pull it up.
Yeah.
Sorry, take it, the, uh.
Like the, like.
Like there.
Yeah, so it looks, on the black and white chance here, the Merrill Street side, it looks like this brick material interrupting the sidewalk. And on the Russia Street side, it looks like the sidewalk. The character of the street right now, it's continuous concrete sidewalks.
Yeah.
And you know, are you, is that, is this a?
No, we're, we're doing, we're doing whatever that, that probably in. Showing what we thought made it clear what was going on. We're excited. You know, you look, so I'm with you. We're going to do whatever, we're going to do whatever D V S wants. Uh, and if they want the concrete sidewalk to be the apron to the driveway, done, it's their real estate matters. So we'll do whatever the city wants. I think this was done this way because it's easy to read and a lot of places do it differently, but I absolutely agree with you. It's better, in my opinion, against yours, that we have the pedestrian be dominant along those driveways. So make, make it a stipulation if that's what D V S, uh, is going to, or even if you want to tell them, we're good.
It seemed, it seemed to me from what D V S said. The neighbors and staff report, it's something about if you were to take, if you had to modify the site. You would replace it on one panel on the other side, which seemed to imply that we're going to keep it. I just want to make sure, no question.
Makes sense.
We go.
Yeah.
Are you saying that you're looking for consistent texture?
Well, it did right now, right now the sidewalks are continuous concrete panels all the way down both streets. Crossing driveways, which is really ideal, as opposed to lots of places in new report, you've got this messy situation where there's, you know, paper. Something like that, just first of all. Chooses their own site, but also it doesn't leave, it doesn't indicate that pedestrian might be there. So I think you want it for safetyism, you want it.
You're describing it like just install it as much. And the continuous, whatever the sidewalk material is.
It is, right. But if you look at Merrill Street, it's.
Yeah, looking up in the application I gave you on page five, Rick's right. There's a concrete sidewalk along Russia Street where all those cars are in pavement on the other side. So we definitely can put that back.
Thank you.
It's all good, good. Yeah, I'm going to need to be going and fixing all that now, right, next street, right?
Thank you. They're not. Especially like around between Woodland and can't. Change it.
One, one, one question on the, with the new structure, the, um, does the side setback, is that creating a new non-conformity? Isn't the, isn't the side setback twenty, is it twenty or twenty-five feet and now it's, it's ten feet?
Yeah.
Reducing. Yeah, I mean, you're on, on your.
It's eleven. It's not a new non-conformity. The side yard on the proposed house.
On the proposed house, yeah, I thought, I thought in the two districts, I thought it was a, a, a higher side setback.
I think it's less than, yeah.
There's actually, there's a setback line shown on the site.
I think, I think you might.
No, I think it's ten feet. I just wondered if that's what's.
I think maybe we were calling a larger number from a different, uh, zone. Yeah. But this is an accurate depiction of the boundary to that.
Right, I, I, I see that. I just, I just saw the number in the zoning report as higher than ten feet. But, but if not, that's fine, just wanted to.
And I did your.
It's just what I like to go back and what.
Uh, I have a couple. In the tree discussion, just, just to one last time. Address the, I'm, I'm concerned with that. I assume there's a full basement.
Yeah.
Do that.
Yeah.
You're comfortable that you're, you're in that one-third range of disruption to.
So I'm, I'm comfortable, but I'm not in a position to guarantee until we get that.
I'm asking if you look at, if you consider, because the roots generally extend as far as the tree can.
Correct.
Have, have you in the design table?
Yes, definitely. We look at that. We're, we're kind of basement. We're basement from the beginning.
I do want to say. Proposal very well done by the design team, I think, because it's already in the spirit. One last question, when, when you first started your presentation, you were talking about some of the other required. I noticed in the staff report that there was some documentation required as part of the C B A approval. A letter from the.
Yeah.
Is that all taken?
Yeah, we, we submitted that the night of the meeting. So it's a little convoluted because I emailed it at like five o'clock because I got it at four 30 on August 27th. So I staffed him and got it in their hands. That's the letter you're looking at.
It's attached to the C B A record, perhaps it should be attached here. You'd like to see it. Or the file here, or is it over here?
I think just because it's mentioned in.
Yeah, I think it's a, I think it's attached to the Z B A record, perhaps here it should be also.
I've been there. So it is on record and, and I think most importantly, uh, in reference to that letter, the content of that was important enough for the Z B A to do that. Why was it important enough to do it? Because they were the butters 29. 29 Merrill, next to the Norway people. And we agreed prior to the meeting to give them an exclusive use easement to clean up the encroachments, right? Give them that land behind the fence. So that letter that they wrote that I got at four 30 the night of the meeting presented to the Z B A that night. It, it ensconced that agreement and it was signed by them. So they got that. But importantly, as Andy is, I think, putting in staff report or stipulations or I'll do it if it isn't. We expect a stipulation of this approval like that to require prior to a building permit being issued or whenever you decide to, to put it in the pecking order, that we're going to provide the city a written copy of the actual easement that we negotiate with, with the butters and Lisa's working on that. So that'll be like the most important piece to back up the letter from ours.
Thank you. Do I have an answer to the?
I was looking at the two family.
Well, it's actually very confusing the way the ordinance is written because right for the question, apply with the lot area requirement to family. Side block, side setback requirements for one family. And it requires each building to have separate distinct rear. Applies with the, with the zoning. The, I think in this case, the hall, Merrill Street, even though it's Merrill Street, longer frontage is on Russia's side, both side. Put backyards facing away from Russia Street.
Yeah, it is, it's, you're right, the single family, that's a single family structure, it's treated that way. It's too single, it's the 10 instead of. It's a great question because we, we struggled with that the first two weeks back.
You were just mixes up single family and two family. There were some regulations for single family, some regulations between them.
Sorry, can you explain to us?
So the, if you look, the dimensional requirements say that, that the proposed residential density shall comply with the lot area requirements, two family buildings. So you're, when you're looking at lot, looking at the two family building, they've got various. If you have your various, you have to. Two family body. Next sentence says, both residential buildings should comply with all numbers of, both residential buildings shall comply with the setback requirements for principal single family building. So, so that the 10 foot side setback. And then the third thing is that each of the dwelling, each of the buildings comply with rear. And because, because of longer. They both, they both of the setbacks are defined in perspective. Merrill Street.
Yeah, you've got a smaller, but accessory structures that are under insurance. I'd be looking, looking closer.
Because that's a smaller building, building below.
We're all learning some here. I have a question. When I'm set with those answers. All right, uh, this might have an obvious answer for some reason at eight o'clock. It's not obvious to me. Uh, and I know you started this journey before the A D U, um, probably the state. Yeah, it's actually what Azia started. So I'm just curious, and you partially answered this because you said your lot coverage will reduce. You only have like 80 square feet more to go there. And it depends, I guess, how A D U ordinance is structured. But my question is, the single family use provision, I would assume that means it's single family use with the rights associated with single family, meaning you can still do an A D U. If you could do an I M B three, probably do an A D U, but I'm just curious. Something we'll need to think about post for this application and that we're just going forward. But I, my assumption is single five family use means single family use, including the ability to add A D Us, right?
Okay.
I'm okay with that because although there's a lot to like about this application, the only thing I don't love is the reduction in units.
Okay.
But this still provides functionality there for future owners.
And, and so the, with this particular case, it makes it.
So the interior.
So you can.
It could be an interior, you could do a detachment.
So sorry, that's another good exercise. So this potentially you want to try to use the one kind of garage. You're saying that the lot coverage is too much, they've already exceeded or. If they were to put the A D, try to put an A D U on with a detached.
Detached.
They couldn't do it.
Correct.
Not without relief, unless you're.
Would you? Yeah, when, when you, yeah, they, they would have to be brought up to the principal structure setback. So this would not be allowed just as a right to go through the. Right in there.
It wouldn't fit in the envelope.
It, yeah, it wouldn't fit it within the envelope, it's.
But you could take, but you could split the whole.
You know, 24 underscore.
It was subject to all the limitations.
We did not even think about that.
What, right, you started before this was even an option. But I just want, I just want to make sure the single family use stipulation doesn't include that, which will make me happier. We did that.
Yeah, I mean, we're referencing single family in general, we're all, all the lots are what we can use.
Yeah.
So these are.
So Andy, does it? We were. Know that before, it's free, right? What do you guys do is fine with us? Does it make sense if you feel like Jamie, as a ward, to be explicit that, that the intention is, it's allowed here? We don't care. Because you may be still drafting things. And they are single family structures. But I can easily see like this conversation in our own efforts to figure out what's the setback. This for that, for this, right? It could be confusing as to whether this is going to be eligible for an A D U five years from now. Because it's a two family use of the lot, not a single family use of the lot. There's two single families on the lot. But they use the lots to family, you get what I'm saying? You're not, we don't care. You can say nothing or say we could do it. But maybe if you say we can do it, it doesn't matter either. The code is going to be the code when you get to the code.
I don't think I would be there, you know, conveying the future, right? I think we just need to confirm when the ordinance.
It's good for you to think about like you draft whatever you. Because you never would know what's going to come before us.
Right.
You know, it's really interesting that this, this means that I, I gave an incorrect answer to the butler at the previous meeting. If you recall, when the first, um, hearing on Forrester Street came up, one of the butlers said that they split up the existing house. We said, no, they're neither doing two units in the existing house or two units doing a 6C. They don't, they can't do both. But in fact, they can using the A D U. But I think that's something we should be.
It's just a A D U is small, but it's like two equals two. Yeah, it looks like. Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm listening here, because I was just playing a ball with you. Which worth noting, I think here, so that the first A D U on lot like this, in any event, pretty good sign, any other would be just a quality of the first A D U. Might be allowed to bring it to the second. If someone were to try to do. It would be, you'd have to have a discretionary review in order to have a second A D U on that lot, irrespective of how we're done. So yeah, so three under the way that it's sort of drafted currently and it can change. You can get three units here eventually someday, but probably, but not four without a higher bar. That makes sense to me.
So are we saying that A D U potential is inherent in two zoning related to A D Us? And we don't need to be specific about.
We don't need to be specific about it. I mean, unless for some reason, you know. There's no reason to be given the, the fact that they are single families, uh, structures. And we may the first one. If someone were to.
And, and we would never say it in the positive. We, we would just say if, if it were restriction, we would. If it was to the positive towards the future, we would leave it alone.
Correct. And again, it still needs to be the dimensional setback. All other privates and great work still apply irrespective of what you're doing, A D U, all of them. Yeah, and the previous, yes, previous succeed, we just proved it's much like a lot, so. There's lots of ways they could probably do an A D U.
A lot easier about it.
Yeah.
Can I, can I come back to the tree for a second? Because the last thing I want to do is be standing here six months from now, next year, and be wrong about like, yes, a tree, right? I don't know the answer. We've looked at it. Well, we think we can do it, but we don't know. And the last thing I want to do is to be here for another project in six to 12 months or be standing on the neighbor today. And that tree is irreparable. When we dig that foundation, which we won't, we'll get there. I would be more than willing to speak on my client's behalf. If the board was interested in attaching a stipulation says if that tree is irreparably parked with the intention of preserving it clearly, that we would be willing to plant two new trees if we get to them along that property. Sufficient help uh, to at least mitigate in the odd chance it doesn't work out because there won't be any mitigation if we get out there. If, again, you feel like when you say that, well, the tree's going to come down, right? Because it's easier to get rid of it, butcher trees. That, that's not the spirit and intent of what we're doing. I'm not going away. My, my client's not new. We're all local. We're going to try to save that tree, but in the spirit of doing what we're saying. Because we don't have a hundred percent assurance. I'm going to speak for my client who's not here and offer that out, even if I'm buying trees. Because I think it's the right thing to do. To burn the more of the video. Do you like it if having a back? That you specifically stated what the fourth.
I'm not sure, I guess my, my. My hesitation, I like the idea, but my hesitation is how, how to set.
It probably is their timeframe.
Yes, it could be a lot.
This unfortunately, this hard to unpack the, the written condition here during the meeting. Because this requires essentially a paragraph, um, explaining some of this. The fact that, for instance, the zoning administrator might allow a winter season to go by, you know, the time frame and the clock. But used up to the spring. It might only be because of the weather conditions, right? But otherwise it has to be done. Right. So it's just hard to unpack that language right here. But we typically write those more like the.
Maybe I'd be willing to just maybe you could do the the spirit of. Yes, and then have it. And tell it to the chair.
Could I ask, to be, they said it might be. Steve, a larger caliber. Question as to.
Really big tree, so I don't think you.
Yeah. Suggest, given my limited but not minor work in dealing with trees. I, I think a five inch caliper tree is a pretty big tree to buy. But nursery. And it's a. You get the harder it is. Certainly be sufficient. And it's just one of those, you wouldn't want. It's like a shrub, really.
Not going to, two trees are not going to match.
No. But in the spirit of it. But if you put more there, they're, they're not going to match it either because they're not going to grow very, very, they need space.
I think it's, it's a good.
No. You don't know that tree.
It's split between us. We'll work, we'll work that out if we get there. They're hopefully not going to have it worked in. And, and I would imagine. Sell the tree. Tree doctor. Do what they do and hopefully they. Because you can only do so much. We've had that. We get a big tree. It didn't survive, but we tried everything in the world. That, that, that tree is probably approaching 80 to 100 years of silver maple. So I mean, tend, they tend with that shade to easily splinter and crack when they have those, those branching pattern. But you know, that, that tree could survive 50 years, it could survive. Given its age, but let's, let's go with it.
The other questions are common. Uh, let's open it up for public comment. Uh, again, please come up and state your name, your address. Please try to limit your comments to.
My name is Deirdre LaMasta. Purchased since Russia. Just the direct. And I wish that you could put that up so that you could see how.
Could you speak up just a little bit?
This one?
Into the.
Okay, sorry. Should I start again?
Yeah.
So my name is Deirdre LaMasta. Purchased six Russia. Um, the clovey date was ever 19. So I missed this activity in August. So I'm new to the neighborhood, which I like very much. And the tree that you're discussing is my tree. I'm getting upset about it. Um, it's right on my driveway. So when you look, do you have like page five? Presentation?
Oh, the application or the?
Because I, I copied it because I just want you to get an idea how this build is going to affect me at six. There is going to be built a huge 37 and a half foot house. 10 foot, 10 feet off my drive. So that, yeah. Um, basically, this new build is going to take away from the left side of my house. Um, I say I bought the smallest house in Newburyport. It's 1,067 square feet. The lot's 4,400. The house is 16 and a half feet tall. So it's very there, you can see it there. So, um, I have a lot of concern about building a 37 and a half foot house. When I look at this and I, I appreciate the beautiful lot. Appreciate the need to build in Newburyport. I'm new to the city. But to build that size right next to a house that has already been there. I don't feel it's fair when you're taking away and taking away all my sunlight. You know, when I look at Merrill Street, which I actually, you know, like that street too, because I tried to buy on that street. It's not progress, but you know, you look at it. It's like 31, it's not 31. Um, but when I look at this plan, um, and, and I respect the immense work that's been done, although it's at the back. I've never even met, I've never even been spoken to by any of the team to discuss them, to discuss my silver maple. You know, and, and I don't think that's fair. I think I should have been included in this because I feel like it directly affects me. The other people we're spoken to, um, they're getting an easement. To me, when I look at it, Merrill Street, they should put the house right there, 31, and have the backyards above my house. Uh, and that they can do their driveways and their garages, but my sunlight, my daylight won't be taken away from you. My house is a 16 and a half foot high house. He's planning 37 and a half feet. And, and it will definitely alter. That block of Russia, I mean, you sound like you know it very well. Um, it's very special, you know, Newburyport is a city. You know, there are a lot of houses, but on that particular block, there's some breathing room. And I just feel like that should be respected. And, um, I feel like my feelings should be respected. there's some breathing room, and I just feel like that should be respected, and, um, I feel like my feelings should be respected on, I was thinking this, if he was building a ranch, which would be, you know, maybe not a historic home, at least that would take away, um, all my daylight you know, my tree, my silver maple, I mean, I love that tree. I'm very concerned about that. So I, I hope that you consider it when you think about giving approval, I'm not saying don't build, I'm saying build a smaller house, put the house where it should be historic, rate at thirty one, thirty one, thirty three, and then I think there'll be a ten foot difference, which is what he wants to do to my property.
Any other comment? Okay, we'll close the public comment. Any other question or comments? Again, uh, a number of things have come up, I think in terms of considerations, one is the utility location connection from, from Russia. Whether it is a concrete um, there's the concrete sidewalk. Herb cuts. clusion of the letter. The ZBA. And if we want to, of this, of this, of this kind of dedication. That's what I had written down.
And I think the, 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 the. While the.
Can I just? I think, I think it deserves something, said, acknowledge, so, um, you're, you're concerned, um, of course, you, a couple of problems, one is that quite a bit is down, yeah, I know you're, you're due, you know, quite a ways down the, uh, process here. The planning director and I had been with Nick, um, discussed this sometime. Or, or even the zoning board, the zoning board, the various. I'd say that I have nothing that affects this application, I have concern about the extent of the variance. Basically, they, they said act, a lot is, like a margin, it was basically double density models, but, um, I, but that being as made, that's the way the various is going, so I don't think that project as proposed could be done, the project could be done on the Merrill Street side, that's, I think that all of this, we, oh. variances from the, some building separation as well as the rear yard requirements, so I think I think that in order to do this project, to do a second person, a lot, even has to be the, the Russian street side, so the question is, can we restrict?
Could you reverse the, the driveway and put the driveway next to my property, house closer to your other house? And then the tree would not be near the pavement, it would just be a.
Separation of buildings, I think you're running, I think you're running into a building code issue here, because buildings have to be separated.
Yeah, you're only.
You could, now, now, really, it's something.
Driveway is on Jason to the front. Tree that we're talking about is, is shading down driveway, but the work, the work is to plan here. So, being kind of westerly sun, late, late in the day.
The tree is at the very end of, the light all come right over the moon, and that's my bedroom, it's right there. It will definitely be a. The tree too, I mean, could you just, what, I mean, there must be something that, I would like to have had this conversation before this quarter meeting, to talk about, I, I mean, I'm a major of utter and I was never reached out. I don't understand, he, that he's booked all the others.
I think it might have been a timing issue with what it's.
Could I suggest something, Mr. Chairman? Because I haven't had a chance to meet Deidre. Do you?
I'm under the sort of letters.
Want to be clear, it's not a but, but you're right, the, the legwork was done here prior to September, preparing for what was the high water mark certification, which is getting a dimensional variance, and, and Jerry, you're, you're a seller, his wife across the road, we're, we're a big part in the outreach. But, uh, I understand your concerns, I, I'd like to suggest what, what's probably a de minimis change, but I think everything is cumulative, like, I hear your comments, uh, Deidre, and I would first like to clarify, when you look at the site plan, the rear corner of that house is a long way from the tree, the tree, the tree trunk is shown essentially in that little circle, right? So you can, you can use that as a proxy for the trunk of that tree, that what you see on that plan, maybe you can move it. It's more or less the trunk of the tree, and the majority of it is on dangerous property. The branching pattern, as you can see on page five, that she was referencing, goes over both properties, and if the Massachusetts law allows you to trim a property, a tree of someone else's, uh, ownership of the trunk, and, and in this case, sixty percent of the roots, forty of them are on the subject property, you have to write Massachusetts to trim that tree, uh, when it's overhanging your property, that, that's not anything other than, uh, a fact. I think so important, the back part of that house is ten feet off the line, which is that tree is about fourteen feet off the line, again, it, it, before feedback, right, you're about fourteen feet where you're cutting the trench for the, even if you did a garage, you've got a four foot cross wall and, and a foot and five feet down, you're taking out most of the roots of a tree like that, uh, that are in the area of the, of the cut. Uh, so it, it's not a basement that's gonna have any different of an impact than accessory structure in that general location, and as you've got, no accessory structures can be six feet as right off the line versus the ten or the fourteen, uh, I would like to suggest, uh, we would be, again, put myself up there, but I'm trying to be respectful of Deidre and her concerns. If this thing was over on Merrill Street, we'd have way less, we did look at Merrill Street, there, there's about ten feet less to even work with on Merrill Street because of the compaction between twenty nine Merrill, the tree that's on our property, that's equally large than Norway, and then the existing structure, so the bigger frontage is Russia, the bigger area was Russia, Russia was the better fit, but we have a tree in both locations. So I, I think what we could accept as stipulation is that we move that house one foot further inboard, so you have eleven feet in the back corner, you'll have fifteen on the front, which again, will not make it worse, it'll make it a little bit better, and you'll still be able to walk between the, the, the accessories, I don't want to have to come back here necessarily to present a new design, but I think we could move the garage one feet, uh, to the top of the page, which is west, and the house one foot to the west, making it eleven and, you know, probably fifteen, but let's go with the eleven, we can see the number on the page, which will make, make things a tad bit better in respect to length, and the house is twenty nine feet to the ridge, not thirty seven, it's twenty five feet to the midpoint of the code, but twenty nine to the ridge, and ridge is, is, you know, uh, has gable end, so it's twenty five feet to the midpoint, yeah, I'm not trying to say there are no issues there, this, this is the pain of, of doing these kinds of infill projects that are often imperfect, but we're certainly willing to make these minor but not hopefully insignificant adjustments on the fly here. We think we can deliver them, and I don't think that's gonna have adverse impact unless Andy does on any of our approvals.
That's what I was gonna ask, that doesn't adjust your.
We didn't get a variance, you know.
Yeah, I don't think that would affect, it'll get, it'll go back to you, Jay, for that, if, if, yeah. Again, diverse board idea of this.
So the proposal is we go to eleven feet where you see ten, which would probably get you fifteen instead of fourteen there, but it's from the tree trunk to the front of that. And we'll move the garage also one foot, so we can walk between the garage. If that's helpful.
I mean, it's all, it's going.
Mr. Chairman, can I speak again?
We're gonna close the public up.
Back up to the chair, I guess, yeah, now, but, I think there's a lot of information moving forward.
I appreciate. I, I appreciate the attempt to, you know, alter it slightly, um, don't know, I don't have any counsel with me, I haven't had enough time to get counsel, to try to see what I can do, um, if the house could be made shorter. You know, I mean, we both own property now, I, I feel like we both have equal.
Can I ask, um, when you were in the process of purchasing this house, was it ever mentioned by Realtor, the owner, one that participated in this?
I, that's why I was so shocked, I got a letter from your board saying, would you like to come to this meeting? What? And that's when I closely read the work that had been done, which was amazing, and saw the height of the house overshadowing my little tiny house.
No, I understand, but you can understand from the applicant standpoint, they went through a whole process over nine months, and they, and so you're surprised, and I appreciate your surprise, but you know, that, and he's trying to compromise, right, he's trying to say, and it's not thirty eight feet, it's twenty nine feet, so you're, you picked up eleven feet in height you didn't even know, so.
Well, I couldn't read, I mean, I read it all.
No, it's okay, but I'm just saying, you know, we're here, I'm gonna try to be fair.
It will still be shut, definitely.
Yeah.
It'll be, you know, it will make a, a, a big difference. Um, I wasn't here in August, I, I was never approached after August, I think just in Mercedesian may have, you know, contributed to the conversation, but you're not living there, I'm with you. I don't know what the answer is, but I, I just uh, you know, like I'm new to the neighborhood, I couldn't reach out to other neighbors to come and support me, they don't even know. Come and talk about.
I'm sorry, I just want to add to the record, it was worth for, for Deidre, all the application that, the entire application that was submitted in in July, the, you know, this meeting. That was provided to the broker, when this house went on the market, and I spoke with the broker. And the sellers though of the project, so there was no effort, I knew someone was gonna move into that, when we started this, but it was fully disclosed, including the whole application to the zoning board, to the broker, so I just want to make that. Thank you.
That's, um, on motion.
And, and I don't, I don't see that. I don't see that there's anything else we don't know in, in this case, so I don't think that, I don't think a continuum is just gonna help any of that. I think we got enough details that we gathered together to take the vote. So I would say, but I'm hoping. Others.
I agree. But for the purpose of just moving this floor and just make a motion, to move the special permit and to include all of the to include the findings, the sixes, special permit, the general to include the imposed special conditions, general conditions and special conditions, um, and then to incorporate, why don't we just two of them again? So one of them is to is to shift the buildings one foot.
One foot.
One foot.
That will be accepted.
Yeah, I guess. Uh, the second one is to maintain the existing continuous sidewalk across those driveways. Concrete panels, uh, one is to require replacement, well, you, you and the chair can work on it because of the two. If the tree, if for any reason there's a, 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 the tree is it can't be saved, the, uh, the applicant will is, is one more, you see, the.
Sure, yes.
Uh, place with two, uh, two new trees, in excess, five inches, is that, is that what you said, Nick? Is acceptable, you think?
Yeah. You. Me, just allowing, and I think you have a particular preference. But you should use maybe, um, if there's any, plus of any particular. It just, maybe, yeah. One or the other, I just don't get it. I'm working on the caliber side, generally speaking, but if you're.
You got shape, a straight, a straight tree.
Not a string tree, no.
Yes, yes, okay.
Um, and
Last one, utility.
And what is the, what is the tree?
You're talking about the location relative to the tree, again, it needs to be moved to the other side.
Yeah, we agree to pay the cost of regressing utilities, that you guys would, uh, you know, would do that basically before.
We, we, we went to the left side.
Yeah.
Of the new house.
But keep it within the same law.
Yeah.
Right.
Right, right.
And.
I think we should accept the applicant's offer to move this, the new house structure.
One foot. I did.
You said, sorry, missed it.
So that's my motion.
Second.
So Jack, um, you can vote on it. I'll do this.
Okay. Okay, I hear you.
Brian? What is that, here, Alden?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
With, yes? Jack?
Yes.
My apologies, but who's the second? I'm sorry, thank you.
What to do?
Yep.
You have some question?
Yes, yeah, we're maybe about to, uh, to get that, yeah, this is the workshop, this is the office.
Thank you.
I hear you.
Just, just a quick note, there's a project a couple of years ago, um, next door to me, with a large silver maple, they built a new house and the they did a huge foundation basement, again, like, three years ago, and the, the tree is still there.
Okay, we'll close.
Okay, we'll close the term period. On the general. With approval of minutes, but I'm not sure we. We just got the notes for the exact.
Regular session.
Yeah, you can. Again, the. Yeah, technically still is.
So on the nineteenth, I did.
Nineteen, you said.
I can make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Can be everybody here, so. All of them.
I.
And the one fifteen.
They just came. The decisions.
Yes. Discussion. Um, I apologize to those of you on the some committee, I've not been able to post them on the show. What is, I'm crafting that language based on a few adjustments. Um, the, um, I did talk to the grant administrator, by the way, so you guys. Bureaucracy before, but technically speaking, in addition to, um, prime bring here, we have still not actually gotten a written contract back from the state. Which, as you guys are not be aware, I can't respond to that with others about, um, doing things sequentially now that makes it technically impossible to get done. But we're technically not even contracting or building services on this first with grant. Anyway, I I had reached out to the grant administrators, you know, I still haven't heard anything back, you know. Uh, but he said, oh, I, you know, I'll close that look to you. Uh, you know, we're still trying to get that closed here. Um, and so at any rate, he, I said, you know, given the fiscal year, this doesn't happen, actually not in frequent, this at least smaller grants at the state. So. I said, you know, it'd be nice to be able to have a little additional time, you know, sponsored and given like the fact you. They compact the fiscal year. This doesn't, this actually has happened on a number of occasions I've seen where the fiscal year, you don't get the whole fiscal year. So anyway. Uh, so he's, he's understanding that we need more time. Everything he has, it's something he has some other grants. Their own internal bureaucracy, laws, or values like that. But he's the person in general, he made the call, it's really just a matrix. So at any rate, um, the, I'll have the, to the some committee and again, all the members, so I, yeah, I don't have an issue if anybody wants to read up, you know. On that, I know it's corporate. The scope of work for the services, uh, to have them help us do the visioning, they're sure, they're sure to correct up or get the double defined blocks and. Back and whatnot. We want the traditional labor block. And whatnot. Right, obviously. So again, apologies to the. You have few things. Well, unfortunately, now a. Five blocks, which is. We'll get going then.
All that you said, yeah, I think. I think it's really. Our own discussion.
Yeah. Yeah, what are. I would really like to.
To that point, could we just see the proposal? I mean, not even to comment, just to know what it is, the kind of thing about.
Let's go.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, we do it in parallel, you know, and then we have to yield, you know, something initiative in this.
Yeah.
It's not lost work, it's just.
Yeah.
So do you have a sense of when, what the new timeline might be?
I think he's talking about another year. He intended as opposed to doing like a six month. Well, they might do that. I don't. Use that. I just was pointing out. Something like that.
So what do you like to know? See, I'm thinking that it'd be helpful to know not just. Did your meetings and. You know, the public meetings and stuff.
Right, so one of the things that you'll see in there, and this is based on what the company for days on the. The schedule in there, obviously. More important ones, obviously, we're not expecting. The meetings, the work meetings. So, um, the expectation there, I do want to look more likely to work with them in fact, but obviously knowing your availability, that definitely works. Basis definitely. But. So every meeting, just meeting on that regular. But then circle back. Be a meeting, but that's too much. Do every meeting as well. Is on, would be able to. So we have to report back. The, we're, we're trying to get feedback as possible. Buy into the overall package as well. I did also.
Just sort of thing. We could, we.
Yeah.
It'd be nice to know. While something in June, we could see. Something, you know, they, they, they would give us, you know, a sense of. Where somebody.
So we don't know that, is what you're saying. We don't, we don't know, like. When the ultimate deliverable is done and then we can back plan into when we should know.
As of right now, based on, other than the discussion I just had the last twenty four, how many of the grand ministers, basically. The, uh, the timeline is June for the, uh, deliverable piece and the, you know, the text obviously, I'd be working permanently on that. The text of the ordinance will be the key thing. We're getting consulted to show what is. Basically, a back, right, referred to like a master dollar plan essentially, so that we can try to pre-break. That's the time for that. I just will be based on like change, given it right. Stay out of it. All, you know, that you're in the, you know, you get. So, um. Again.
Just think, given, given the frequency of our meeting, given the kind of. This is at least six months. To do, to do the job. Starting from now, we're already. So to your point. Getting our heads. That's positive step towards. So man. Even if the grain gets deleted and we're in a total crunch, we're. We've, we've given our intellectual thought to it.
We can get ahead of this. Get ahead of this. Project assignments.
Versus the other.
We can just, you know, make part.
But if we start.
Yes, one hundred percent. Actually, one do this week, it just take up.
Huge. No, no, it don't work. You don't have to pause this. You can do see the dilemma you're in. And then, like you say, if we get a draft of whatever your working draft is.
Yeah.
We can wrap our arms around it between now and next Thursday, we'll be at least down the road. Right? We have some directional arrow. Towards.
There's a new potential model. Somebody shared this with me, Burlington. They just, they just adopted. Couple of weeks ago. A mixed-use innovation district. For the Burlington Mall area. Four, four overlay districts to do mixed use and. Work, life, play, kind of stuff. I think we should look at that and plus the model. Something. It's the area. So it's, um. This includes the Burlington Mall, Coles, Broadway Square, Burlington Marketplace. And converted into one, it's four in different zones. Increases one overlay. It sounds like exactly what we're talking.
Didn't do that, Lynnfield? Do that when they did that.
I'm sure. I did some work on. I don't know.
They do where the whole foods is.
You're not, you're not talking about.
It's a juice. Mix of juice in terms. Right.
You're saying residential with the issues.
Yeah, I feel correct, I think we want to aim for the, the true mix use, so to speak. So, yeah, definitely agree. I like the vibrancy, but I want, I don't think we want to have totally separate.
Well, they have a skating.
I think we're talking about a lot of intensity.
Yeah, yeah, sir. Well, that, that will be just about like, you know, I think. All the time, that would be the best of the discussion, just in terms of, you know, we have a certain. You know, that's what we could do, we have very different options, but at the end of the day, I know that. The sort of, you know, the. Scenario. We're sort of like, what's for you, what's for us? Or something. But that. Show that change is gonna be might. Your. You know, even if it became our project larger, I think that he's, I would choose to do by its own version, um, in some ways. Well, that's, we do that, you know, choice wise, I do that, they'll be your vibrancy added to kick up there. So I think.
Do you have any sense of the timeline here?
They are making progress in state, uh, I'm actually. They should still be spring for ZVA by a little bit. Spring this year. Yeah, I'm gonna get that's the earliest. You're in place.
That's very quick in this next month.
Yeah. I think people. All that oversee that.
Well, then it would be good to know. And that's, it have no effect.
It will, I mean, to some degree. So we get a different. We maybe like. Put something in there and say, if it doesn't happen. Why, but. Most of our high water assumption that that's an insertion. Probably maybe for scales. At the same time. I wouldn't necessarily be going. Yeah, it's available. Things more like. Some nation, the backlog might be taking, you know, a lot of speed.
Could be a good thing, because it could, you know, if it changes how people look at the. They say, yeah. Not paying that visit. People, they say, oh, three stories.
I just can imagine all of the comments we heard from the. Bobbers and people. It'll be times ten. Density, traffic, utility. Speed.
Wish you coming with. What, what's next meeting is it? School vacation. You still have it on for the five pages up here. Yeah.
Not here.
Okay. From the pool. Yeah, um, I mean, they, by the way, they kept it at. The zoning here. No, yeah, sorry. The order, you sell the property, you know. In parallel. See, right? You have one miler, we guys officially recommend Jenny based on this guy. Fifty eight, right? Sixty five years, actually, sixty two years, uh, for the senior house.
So they're keeping the table.
Um, great question. I think you and I might agree on this. Uh, I, I, there's a few things I recommend, uh, we can hear, nothing actually, just. Uh, but to me, I would just take away cells and then take them not being used, so. The gym is not being resaled.
And you can migrate into the gym or the youth center.
Take it out of the organs, and I realize the sponsor amendment doesn't include that definition. Uh, I know it's shown, it's a document, if you change that to be made for the private, see in the organs, but. Those cells would never be needed, and one of the consequences like you have is why do you want to get complicated, using, which is what, you know, old stuff in there? Why have somebody in the organs or keeps up the work? You, so I can be recommended that we involve those.
And I would also. So I mean, you were the history.
Yeah, um, you, you mentioned that. My reaction to that was, I, I agree from an ideal perspective, but at the same time, it doesn't make a difference to me in a day because it's something. Wouldn't be the same. So if we can do machinations of. The whole brown district includes the park space that remain in the brown school. Or would you just say the brown movie district now only includes the parts we're selling and the park is no longer part of the public district, but. I'm not as concerned. Will we get the summer. The zoning, what essentially. See, it's like, well, you're, you're right. It's true about.
So is the, is the. Is the vision of the property? That's a piece of the city. Is that exactly the same as the. Larger?
It is not, it is larger, but it's not. The reason I say that is really, if you have your own, there's that. The playground is part of. The courts are best. The amphitheater is, it wasn't a hundred percent clear what the amphitheater is, it's just certain parts of the entire city square that is. So there is a little bit more here. City, um, that. Huge percentage.
I guess, I guess what I'm thinking about is. Couple of years ago. Even more, I think you went through a process. Rezoning all. The. Other city land to. And to be consistent, we probably rezoned. At con anyway.
Yeah.
Why rezoned something and then to rezonate to something that involves housing and then have to come back and later rezoned it.
Yeah. I definitely appreciate where you're in that, um. It, I guess to me, it's a little on that scale of, um.
Maybe I'm.
It, it, well, I think you're a hundred percent, I do want to say a hundred percent, let's do, uh, at home for Tom going right. This becomes broadly, but it's not gonna change in the end of the day, so, so in reality, sure, we can come back. Be changing, but I'm also trying to weigh, uh, it's no problem at the line. But it probably, um, every sort of customer, certain. So, given that it probably won't change in the end of the day, I'm not as bothered, at least. Not as bothered by the continued existence of the. Continued existence of the argument is. Is in the ground. Here too, while property being done, that district didn't need anymore like. We didn't care. I. Or say, so, you know, two days of that, that's, you know, being the ordinance, and one that. Needing losing people. But. At the end of the day, would make sense to have this, uh, trade to make it stand apart. Definitely, although the other part, that we have, I'm just not bothered by it because. So I'm not bothered by that, I have to hold up, this is the exit, the ordinance.
What is the purple in that plan this?
This is the amphitheater.
So that figures out if we say.
No, sorry, just to clarify. This is one of the things that's. So. A lot of our, let me set designation will then raise this. Being bound by. This one with the views with text description and it's in an area equivalent to. So it's not necessarily that the amphitheater, uh. Physical equipment, you know, that the, the, that could be relocated, uh, and we'll figure out where exactly. But it's not necessarily even the exact same. But based on the type of that. Where it's actually equivalent area. So that's what it's gonna be, why there's some flexibility is that. Here and that was no street, um, you know, part of the rather than the. And it just, that's how it works.
Now, what are we going to, this is it? Yeah.
Yeah, sorry, quick question. So, uh, the only reason I. Do, yeah, is that. All the other, you know. Dates is, is thinking about the closing dates, uh, the, the, I'm trying to make sure that we're still in six months on the closing day. Uh, not have to do the whole like re, restatement of the plan, you know, so. You know, A and R bureaucracy days, but basically, uh, it probably like a couple of months out, a few months now. With the art plans, actually, we look down to endorse. Council's been referred to now, but the player needs to mount in this position, but we would hold off closer to the closing date until the. Closing attorney can rely upon an A and R claim of faith if this is reported, that, you know, it's still valid in the registry. It's just, you know, bureaucratic minutia, but that's a really good example yet. Uh, we did have a plan prepared mainly because the council's trying to, um, confirm this is any areas. Followed with plan, but, uh, that's. And again, this is, I assume you have a complaint. She and. Exactly. Obviously, I expect this, you have the same. One of those.
And those designing, the revised owning. Does that? Make it, there's a bright news.
Oh. Boy, you're came prepared tonight. You're, you're very prepared, uh, so another reason. Another big question issue, so the ordinance does, uh, you know, uh, require an extra permit for the project. Uh, by having this. There's two sponsors, but the one who, the most graphic. Scott. The need for having, you know, given the, in this case, there's a lot of specificity, but. Here. If it's only the original school building. The site plan wasn't going to allow a lot of flexibility, everybody, but this, well, the E doesn't say. So the idea of being, um, cycle interview versus, you know. Levels of work, um, there is still a need for a certain permit, I believe that will be a desire. But I think it'll be. Do by the playbook. Anyway, then to their discussion, of course, um, but I think there might be desire, council might at least believe that. You have an additional layer of speed or. Uh, and if you get quite condensed, by, easy, given the levels that's. All of that, okay, they play. But I think that, um, the design. Should be on, on that review. It may be your scope is narrowed down to more specific. In there, you know, you have a little bit more definition, something. Oh, you know, the view a little bit of one another. Yeah, but it is a special permit, the one thing I was able to, um. Suggest is in there right now, and I think the beneficial is actually there. Since there, it seems to be no long, no longer much to be about the gym. Quite as right in the. Where the original language would have made that also a special permit. Uh, and that seems a little bit, uh, for the top, that it's not necessarily. So. It's not a part of our process, just to follow something. So I asked that please be, um, included, that isn't too, um, important or expedited work, and that's probably because originally. Hope to do the demolition work this spring, unfortunately, it looks like we'll probably. All that's probably. State funding, um, but I'd still like to do that, in a system on the overtime frame, so that we can take advantage of this season. That's.
So, so will the sponsors of the ordinance change coming, they coming to make a presentation to us, if we need to?
Yeah, um, again, I prefer that. Be very, you'll probably get captured, you'll probably get the prior presentation, capital change, the other sponsor. Uh, I think he'll give the prior presentation, I'll walk through it as well, because, uh, I have to present myself. You see, it's prepared to do that. And so we'll speak, I think, of the changes, I, you know, I would agree with. Thinking of self. You didn't. Get the concept entirely that that back there, just won't make a difference to me here, and I'm not. Sort of picking and choosing which thing. Like a lot of me at the end of the day, so I'm like. He's here. So.
I can see that. Keeping the whole thing in the. Simple because. The whole thing is a beautiful.
It is, yeah.
So, so you'd have to come up with map change, or it'd be an extra step. Excuse me.
So just, just another non, unrelated question. Um, is, is that whole area? They designated a city playground?
Uh, when you say parking area.
That, that whole area that, that's being reserved by the city, Watson, do you not, is that?
Yes.
Is that considered a city playground?
Just to clarify, and so I don't know what the future park improvements will be, and there could be, you know, city has the ability to reconfigure that as well. I don't know what. Exactly, you know. Hover. Would be pretty. To come up with what should be done here on. Your adjustment that changes, but as of right now. Still assuming that this is the playground location, you know, for the near term. This is the court, these might be made available. Parking. If you try to gain the ability to take some cars on the street or something. Use that space. Uh, that. Here, trying to, you know, sort of like a grass. So, you're running, getting access all everywhere, um, trying to get. Emergency access they need, uh, work. On the plan over here, there's parking. Here, they would work. A second, you know, sort of secondary access, well, it isn't quite as hard to. Or to work. But this area here, um, it's not. I think it's like a soft landscape area, maybe some brass and that. But. Just the. Wouldn't like that. All that.
Yeah, my question was, was just the current. I, I, I see there's the current, current status of it. In, in, in light of the park department's declaration of. First of. Not allowing dogs on or off leashes in playgrounds.
Oh, sorry. Can't miss one to that.
I didn't think you were, I'm just curious though.
Yeah, I can't speak to that one too much, the, uh, in terms of start space, I mean, in fact, it's being in the article that is something based, isn't like, it wouldn't necessarily be captured in this area right now, the way it's, you know. This is, this would make it a hundred percent. Clear where the. We don't really have that. Language. Um, so I, to the extent the parks commission is speaking to parks and what's going on there, I guess, technically speaking, they might be speaking to the playground and the courts. You want, we could say the circle, it might be in the circle.
I was just curious, because I don't recall, there was the article in the newspaper about the whole playgrounds, and I don't, I don't recall them mentioning the brown school area.
Well, I think, I think the reason that, and, and I don't know, I don't know if they could apply some rules there, but they don't actually have, it's not. Read their umbrella as a city park that way. Uh, if I'm not mistaken, I don't think it's listed as a city park yet, because technically it's still. It's somebody that made the city household or something in the school department. I think. Raps probably a little bit scumming about shade, and there's only just a go rate or something, you know, something that happens, it's never going to be in the. I think you will see at some point, you know. You aren't. You see here, transfer. Into the park mission. If you get. Is the. Brown school. Building or both. I. I think this will be transferred to the park mission jurisdiction and listed. Yeah, the true park mission jurisdiction, where right now, it's technically. Maybe I answered the question.
Yeah, well, that's fine. Yeah, just back on the, on the whole overlay district, is there any concern with the fact that they, they changed their proposal for the ordinance? Reduces the guest parking down to one space? The previous four?
I, I change this back. I, I have less. Generally, because. And, you know, that's. You know, recommend. It is, you know, a question. You're. So. I didn't want to. Number, which it'll sell, you will, or. That functionality, I think it works here, so I'm okay. Where do you guys, if you want to talk about the ratio of their splits or? Or that sort of.
I just saw, they, they, it was re- referencing the guest parking.
Yeah.
It's just down to one, one space.
Yeah, and there isn't in the plan right now, although there would be potentially so far, you know, it's. It's a lot in the off season, there isn't any, uh, public park like. Being preserved, so to speak, the.
I just, you know, wondered connection, because they're proposing some community space.
Yeah.
In the, in the, in the building.
Yeah.
And they have requirement, in any event, there should only be, uh.
The local residents. Residents. It can be a very small space, um, I mean, just, you know, based on your unit count. The building, i- i- and even just the discussion, it would not be a huge space anyway.
Right.
So, there's definitely, you could have a few people show up in this place, and car in the street, maybe getting on, use that space, but it's going to be a small enough space that I wouldn't expect. Be a huge demand from people unless they're meeting as well groups, because they probably try to get into things like senior center, you know, smaller cities first. Uh, I don't think the space will be able to provide, especially, you know, there are, there's a building addition, it's just the original brown, the language, they want pretty much to, uh, yeah.
Still less than school.
Yeah. So again, it doesn't bother, the ratio, I'm not, it's been concerned by this. It's the other day. We so. It is obviously a discussion that. Excuse. Will that be part of special permit discussion, or have that all already decided?
It will, but the ordinance already, it's, it, it sort of passes.
It's already.
Be able to say, if we, you know, we're never saying, we need more parking.
Yeah.
I, I think you, there's case law to support like a real, you know, push on something like that, but you have to have a really good rationale. They choose, they thought more to rule out that, I don't think that would really work, given the council's determined appropriate ratio. I think that, that, you know, as long as.
No, it's, it's already. It's already been decided, because. So, well, that, this is, that's my saying, this is your point of input, you're happy to input, do it on the ordinance, because the. School problems, you know, it's going to dictate what you've been required to say.
Well, my, my, to say that I may kind of. Um, like in a flip way, but. Um. The not, you know, not more substantially detrimental would be compared to. Is forms of the school?
Yeah, I mean, I, I can't see anything, any reason for denying. Maybe I have to describe it a bit more directly, like. The, the product is being promoted, I don't know how to say the definition of the name, or to do the. Like, what do these happen to, so. I'm not, to me, it's not like, I'm not getting myself to a path of denial of more specificity, or is there general landscaping, better streaming for a butter? Better sidewalk activity material, or, you know, you know, green giving, we can do anything like that. Again, it's. A lot of. Like decision in the main, just this division, but there's a lot of clarity to the whole overlay, so, um. Yeah. Yes. It's been a long time getting to this point, so. Yeah, I'm just trying to get my. Mind around the role we play. It's clear. Right, we'll do the fit and finish. Well. That's okay, I believe it, a lot of hard work put into it, but a lot of smart. Yeah, so it's. I don't know, it's a good thing, it's just, uh. That's really just, like I said, if there is a concern about a specific number of, whether the. This is the time to, to your point, to your question, because you might not be able to dictate those. If your ordinance basically, that gets eligible if they do that, right, so. If you have any concern. There, um, you know.
I, I was concerned that they lowered the percentage of affordable. From twenty percent down to ten percent?
No, I'm not sure we got that.
Um. Senior affordable units? The gymnasium raised? Changing it from twenty percent, the units to ten percent?
No, they actually only cross that to. They changed it from twenty to a hundred.
Oh.
You're looking at the market.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is, it is crossing out. It's hard to read. That's fair.
That was, that was the thing, it was just making sure, I think it makes. Made the numerical adjustment.
Yeah. That's fair.
Yeah, yeah, um, and it, that, I mean, that's a finer. Sure you move that. Oh.
Good question, um. There's so many over there is. Is there anything? So the, the exact ordinance. Says that demolition of gym. Is exempt from the demolition control overlay. But demolition of little accessory destructive conditions, not. Is there any reason why those are still protected in the motion? No.
And this is only dealing with.
Looking at paragraph.
Sorry.
Section accessory destructive additions, such as those. Fifty four seventy.
Yeah.
Commitment to a special permit.
Yeah.
In addition. You don't need a special permit for demolition of gym. And that. But why? Why is the, why is, why is that first? The fifty four seventy and ninety and seventy five additions not exempt also? I would think that you want exempt. Because this is coming to the plan. That's just being reviewed. Why aren't all of the?
Um, sorry, maybe it might, I, I actually gave the sponsor, I. I gave different language to the sponsor, um, that I, perhaps it was a little bit more. Clear. We might be able to wordsmith a bit to your point. Uh, I, I had offered different language for this, it's got wordsmith by the sponsor. You know, tweet a bit here. The intent was to make all that demolition.
I think we'd simplify that paragraph.
It would, in my. The my language would work a little better at that purpose, but, but it, it, that is the intent.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I'd say it's a job, a different language that was, was making it very close, that all that. Was all.
We can, we can adjust that.
I can even, maybe I can make a point, just, uh, we can include this data. For, I guess, I know. You do. Just give the language I was originally thinking for that.
Yeah.
You know. All the. Sixty five and sixty two, the next. That. Could be worded differently, and I did choose a different language, so. It could be.
Isn't the concept every time you're instructors?
The, this ordinance was making it clear initially that everything was going to be something through this. Process, and even though I think even if you. People might say, it is a really need out. So these, you know, problems are. These.
I'm just saying, if they hurry, the nineteen fifty seven, it said, could be done one by one. Two years.
I think. I think I'd rather get. One special permit for two special.
Yeah. Leave, um. You guys, why would I? Because. Different. Yeah, it was like. Yeah, just that way. My language.
So, okay. Are there going to be anything else in that meeting?
Yeah. I'm sorry. I'd like to um. You carry. Um. Any other? I, I, you have that. Regulations on. Even. Maybe about that. So we can show people where. Okay. Well, updated. We need to do that. Or something like that. Yeah, the only reason I think not. Show people what were the changes are, you know, and I can't, you know, people will be. Separated, and we see obviously be my dad, you know, saying so. So we're just trying to. That now. That I think is important, if you think other than the package, like. She may, you know, be a free. He would do that, just want to take part in the house. Do you have any? Which they.
It, it's actually proven very good, I, many of my clients, when they, they go.
Changing.
Yeah, changing because they suddenly are within, but. Insurance, it's, you know, significant.
Yeah.
So they'll get an elevation certificate.
Yeah.
My, here's my question. So we're in that world. FEMA maps are coming out, changing all this, we're updating or?
Yeah, it, it happens, it happens every. So you end up having, you know, two, you know, every time they're voting back. They can system with the new. The new tax changes, but they don't remember, you know, significantly. But we have an updated tax report, it's. Do that. I don't know, or you know that, yeah, but we want to get it on. You're actually sit at. This is the old one that's. Seal right. We, we have to do that. Just make sure this is the way it's. A little hard, I think, depending on your. And please, you're. It is the way you're.
So why?
So that's what I'm still looking through right now, uh there aren't new adjustments, the question, but. I want to understand how significant.
It'll be interesting to see if. If they are significant in any way. What if they start hitting our future C level ones projections, you know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah. I don't, it doesn't want to go with that. You, you can see the creeping. You can see that.
Is it, is it gonna be ten or twenty feet or?
Yeah. It seems to be sort of.
You had mentioned that. It's coming before. Yes, they talk about. So originally when they did that. These proposals and the footmaps changed, they wiped out like fifty percent of what they proposed approximately. Yeah, so now I'm wondering, so when it back to years later. Happen again, have you looked at?
All of it. No, I. Um, yeah, again, it's, someone can try to do something more, consider the judgment we made, but, you know, yeah. We've been. So reality is, it become part of our top. To maybe were, you know, at the beginning, because everybody wants to.
Conversation I heard. Remember, they, they weren't acknowledged.
Yeah. They were questioning what the projection. Yeah. Yeah, the question is in response. Sorry. And obviously, we don't want to be sure to use your hat, knowing that, you know, there's something that can be right to add. So we're trying to, you know. Okay.
So I'm.
Next one, not to be. Be away. Yeah, if, if you can, for instance, if you're not here, you can. Now, I'm not, but I.
There's no, there's no, um, you don't have any.
Not been a vote on it.
A requirement, all we need to.
There, there's an A and I think we're doing it just because of the.
We just do it for people, just.
Yeah.
Um. Were in a motion for German, I just wanted to formally pledge our honor to chair. And, and thank you. Two years of uh. Leadership. Experience. Experience. Which were still. You know, I don't know how many years you've been chair of.
Not.
You, you, you had. Tremendous. And you're a top act. Did great. Wanted, wanted to thank you.
Just for the record, he wanted to make a motion to adjourn about two minutes ago.
So with that. I have a motion.
I think it was.
Those in favor.
Aye.
Where we at? Mal, you definitely was answering battery. Matthew Efron, hope to be on board for the next meeting.
Waiting for the next.
Ah, where? Thank you very much, I appreciate it, I'm looking forward to partaking in. Very excited, I'm looking forward to sharing the fun. Yeah. You guys are a great group. Yeah, I'm making the most. Well, I don't think it's very. I'll get my hand on the. You keep doing that. He gets. That's why. You want. And if I'm, no, no, I'm trying to, it's a challenge to us. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, figure. It's a. Yeah, I'm gonna be around to the. It must be sad.
I'm just like administration.
Five, six, one, two. Yes. So, and I think, I mean, you always like to have to review how much you. I think it's taken a long time. I have these. Then, then somebody else would ask. And then sure. It's not a problem. I leave that now, yes, not. Right, right, right. Did it. Well, I'm standing all the way through, it's a slight humor. So. So we have these. Yeah, I worked in the front. And I'm like, I consider this. I don't know. I was like, listen, I was thinking. When I know. Yeah. I can. They got sent to. Certainly. Yeah. There was. Against the development. Stand that the earth. Twenty million against. She said five years, five weeks, years and another ten.